Hi, how are you?
This meeting is being recorded.
Hey.
I'm good. You're gonna have to forgive us, we're having some technical problems here, so we're all closing into Chris's office here. My computer.
We have a minute until we're gonna get to your part, so we'll get everything started and then hopefully you'll be all set up. So, okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:30 Monday, August 16th. We're gonna notice that things are gonna be a little bit different this evening, we are down our first select woman. They had a loss in the family, so please send them your best wishes. I will do my best to facilitate Erica maybe joining us via Zoom. And if she gets on here, we will be happy to see her, if not, then Jim and I will do our best. So, before we get started, we're gonna sort our business of the pledge of allegiance.
Under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next, normally we would do present to speak right after the pledge of allegiance. But this evening, we have a slightly different agenda. We have a joint discussion with the Ashford Board of Selectmen regarding the Cattle Rock property. So, we will get to present to speak, but it will be after this agenda item. So, many of you know that the Cattle Rock property is something that has been on our radar for quite a lot of years. There was a large piece of property, most of it was in Ashford, there's a chunk of it that is in Wellington. That was a brownfield and needed to be remediated and cleaned up. And we have the Ashford Board of Selectmen here, are you all able to hear us and see us?
I'm able to see you. I'm not sure our selectman Silversmith is with us, so Catherine, are you there? I don't think so. Roger Phillips and myself are here.
Okay, so do you have a quorum? You can still.
We have a quorum.
Did you wanna start? I know that there had been some meetings, do you wanna give an overview of where we're at right now?
Yeah, I'll give you a quick overview. On July 27th, Erica, Kelsey, Chris Avikoff, myself, and our council, Anne Cuttino, met to discuss general status of the project and where we would be going from here. And the consensus seemed to be, we've got a deadline coming up with getting a grant application for the final phase, hopefully for the remediation for the property, in which we intend on putting an application in for $300,000. That deadline is the 15th of September. And what the consensus at our meeting was, and we decided to bring a combination of both boards to get feedback, would be called a public hearing for public input and just go with status the week before that, which would be September 8th. And have it a combined meeting and invite obviously the public from both of our towns to just to have a general discussion to sort of go through and accept recommendations or at least consideration, recommendations that we may have for uses of the property. As you know, a main hurdle that we were hearing from deep and all the parties involved pushed us over the past couple of years to take ownership of the property, which we've done. And now what they're saying is something else that will be beneficial to us is if we try to have some broad span ideas of what potential uses would be of the property. And I think that brings us to the stage that we're at right now. I also might munch, I'm very sorry to hear that Erica's had a loss in her family and if you see her, please extend our best wishes, condolences. Anyway, so the idea, I believe, was to get consensus tonight between our two boards to call a public hearing on September 8th. The location had not been decided. My preference would be, since we have the lion's share of the property here in town, would be to do it in town. Our largest facility, if we didn't use the school, would be Norton Hall. It's quite difficult to gauge, you know, how many are actually gonna participate in it, but that's the largest facility that we had, so that's my two cents. Catherine, anything to add, or Roger?
Well, actually, I didn't get to hear the beginning of it because I had difficulty getting in. I will tell you that the link on the Ashford site is not working correctly, therefore people from Ashford can't get into this meeting. So, all we're gonna have is our three selectmen without public being able to observe or participate. So, yes, Ashford has the lion's share.
To that, it is being recorded and taped, but yeah, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, it is unfortunate because there are people that wanted to attend. So, as far as what you were just saying, yes, Ashford has the lion's share. I know that over the last couple of years, and well, even more than that, through multiple selectmen that we've been working with, Wellington and Erica has been a terrific partner. So, we do need to get this property resolved as to what we're gonna do with it. I am a little concerned, actually, I'm a lot concerned about the short timeframe we have to come up with what is supposed to be the use that's gonna qualify us for funds to remediate the property.
Okay.
We're coming down to a very short wire.
Yeah, so just to give a little bit more information to those who don't know exactly where we're at. So, the property has been remediated, yes, and so now we're at the point where we're talking about what's the plan for use for this large spot that crosses over from Wellington and that crosses the line of Wellington and Ashford. So, there are grants that we can apply for.
There's a small portion that has yet to be remediated, and that's the last part of the grant that we are looking for.
Okay, and what we're talking about now is holding a meeting on September 8th. Right, do you have that date, right?
Yes.
September 8th at 6:30 PM for the residents of Wellington and the residents of Ashford to come together to talk about potential uses for this land for grant application that is due on September 15th. Okay, so that's the conversation. So, what we're really doing now is we just need to agree on the call, so to have a call for a town meeting, right?
Yeah, so could you please put your name up on your screen? I was cut off when I was speaking. The person who was just speaking, I think I know who it is, but your name is not on the screen.
No, because this is the town, this is Liza, I'm sorry. Selectwoman Boris. So, I'm facilitating for Erica today.
I mean, at least travel.
Yeah. We can determine the location tomorrow, we don't need to do that within the context of this meeting, but we just need to agree on the call for the meeting. So, I'm gonna push forward a motion and then Ashford, if this sounds good to you, then we can move forward with that. So.
We would have to, we would have to put forward our own motion, wouldn't we, Bill?
Yes, we can do that after they do it, just to reflect so we're on the same page.
Okay, so I'll read one first and then you can let me know if that sounds good and then we'll vote on it and then you can do your call, sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'll move to hold a joint public hearing with the town of Ashford on September 8th at 6:30 PM to discuss the potential uses of the Cattle Rock property. Second?
Second.
Jim? Okay, and discussion, so once again, this is to collect ideas from residents in both Wellington and Ashford on potential uses for this swath of land that crosses our town borders.
And this is a requirement for the grant application?
Yes.
Yes. Just clarifying that for our records for everybody.
Yes. And potential uses, you know, could be hiking trails, recreational activities. I think, Kelsey, we talked earlier, potential senior center, any sort of community gardens, that kind of stuff. So, we will be able to talk more in depth about that on a September 8th meeting. And the location will be determined and published tomorrow, or at least will be determined tomorrow and published with the official call. Ashford, does that sound good? I'm making sure that I didn't make a mistake before we vote. Is that good?
Who are you asking?
Ashford Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
That sounds good as far as, you know, our input to your motion, we'll be making our own motion, which will be reflected with that. I might just say, and I noticed Anne's on, hi Anne, who's our council on this. Did you have anything to add to that, Anne?
No, I think, thank you. Those who don't know, I'm Anne Cuttino, I've been representing both towns on this, I'm with the firm of Halloran and Sage. I think the motion is a fine motion. What I do wanna say is we have to kick off the process. And that's really what we're doing here, is kicking off the planning process and gathering public info and public information that can inform the boards as to what are the next steps that each town wants to take for purposes of redevelopment. If the town wants to keep it for recreational use, hiking trails, senior center, community center, more of a public use, that's fine. If instead the idea is to offer it out for some sort of private use, that's fine too. But we need to get the process moving. It's significant for purposes of the DECD application because there's a lot of competition for the brownfields funding. And we've done very well with brownfields funding. But we're at the stage where things have changed. We, the towns, I say we, the towns own the properties now, which is, you know, big difference from the last time we had submitted an application. But given the amount of competition, it behooves us to take the next step and try to figure out what's the end use. That will help us with DECD and the application. It's also going to help us in discussions that we need to have with DEP because DEP has liens orders on the properties, on all the properties, and we need those released at some point, particularly if they are, if the decision is, the collective wisdom is to offer them for sale or private use. We need some closure. I'm also working with EPA on the release of the liens EPA has. Having said that, we also need to figure out, is it gonna go for a public use or is it going to go for a private use, and if so, how? Because that also factors into potentially any forgiveness and the terms of forgiveness of the fines, or not the fines, but the amounts due EPA. So, there's a lot of balls in the air right now on this. So, the first step in talking at the meeting that we had a few weeks ago was getting some public input that begins to inform the process that both communities have to engage in so that you do find a productive reuse. We get the final remedial funds to clean it up and then we can finalize any agreement we have with EPA.
Anne, you're also talking about, this is Catherine, you're also talking about us having to make that decision, the two towns having to make that decision very quickly in order for us to put something on the application for the remediation funds, is that correct?
You don't have to make a decision, we need to get the process started.
Okay, so we have, so we have some leeway, so we have some leeway, so we have some leeway as to what we put on the application because this is a very short period of time for any town to decide this. It hasn't been brought before the town of Ashford, really, before this, other than letting them know this is where we were in the general process of acquiring the property. We have nobody here from Ashford on this call unless, until, except for the three selectmen because the other people can't get in and they don't know how to get in to the call. So, is the point of this to set a date for a public hearing in both towns? I don't know if it's a joint public hearing, but a public hearing for the town to become informed and give their initial thoughts and that we would have, not just us laymen there, but we would certainly have someone who is familiar and expert at the, at marketing a property like that and looking at potential uses for it.
So Catherine, right now.
Actually, my question was to Anne.
Well.
Is that where we are, because we've worked together before?
What we're doing right now is getting public input as to what direction do the communities want to go, just in a very general abstract sense.
In this meeting?
No.
Not at this meeting, it's September 8th.
What we're doing right now is that we have to vote on our call to meeting, that is the end of our.
Well, you can vote, the Wellington can vote and then we will do our own vote.
Right, and so I'm gonna get back to our votes, I'm gonna do a call for a vote, would you do a roll call vote?
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye. Okay, motion passes, so we have, the Wellington Board of Selectmen has passed that motion to hold a joint town meeting, or public hearing rather, on September 8th at 6:30 PM. In location to be determined tomorrow, we will iron out the details tomorrow and publish the location details as soon as it's available. That is the conclusion of what we needed to accomplish this evening and then our future discussion on September 8th will be about the use and the further topics that Anne was discussing.
Bill, would we be making the exact same motion? And if so, what needs to be read back to us?
We would be making the same motion and to authorize the board, the Ashford Board of Selectmen would authorize a calling of a public hearing relating to the Cattle Rock property on September 8th at 6:30 for a site to be determined in the near future regarding potential uses of the Cattle Rock property.
Is that the same motion that Wellington made?
Essentially, yes.
I'll second the motion.
All right, just a couple of comments, I just wanna go over the meeting and I'm not sure where, I know you unfortunately had to come in late, Catherine, because you couldn't get in, but the meeting that we had back on in July with Anne and Erica and Kelsey and Chris, myself, what we felt was important was to have at least an initial public hearing to take input from the public and to be able to have that on the record. I don't believe there was any intent in that public hearing drawing any final conclusions. It was strictly to take public input and hear from residents of our both towns about what their ideas, but not for either of our boards to make any final decisions. Is that how you read all that, Anne?
So, Bill?
Yes.
We have, we have to fill out the application in order to get in for this round of funding. We have to get our application filled out and submitted by what, September 15th? I forget what the date was.
September 15th.
September 15th, and I am aware of what that meeting was because I got filled in before by Chris Avikoff.
I think I did something in writing to everybody.
Yeah, I have that as, I have that as well. Now, it's my understanding that at that hearing, our intent is for it not just to be public input, but also to have some guidance, some additional information by a company that's expert in this, is that correct?
We have not decided, I don't believe, on inviting particular guests, but between Anne and I know we've talked about a couple of other, the engineer firm coming in and giving us an overview of perspective and background of the property.
That's what I'm referring to, is that engineer, and that's the same company that also assessed the property in terms of what we needed for remediation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so part of what I'm talking about is for the public because I will be sending out information to people in Ashford so that they can come in and they can look at the recording for this meeting. So that they're clear about what we're really trying to do from their perspective.
Roger, any comments?
Nope.
Anything else, Catherine? I'll call for.
Just that I am, just that I am concerned about the short period of time we have to designate a use on that application because I believe we have to have something that is viable on the application, is that correct, Anne?
Yes and no, we need to set forth, you know, a general approach. If what comes out of the meeting, for example, is there's overwhelming support, turn these into recreational uses that benefit the town and make cross-country trails for skiing or whatever. It's like, and the boards, because I think there's a board meeting scheduled maybe at the end of it, for direction. If that's the direction, everybody wants to go in and the boards agree, can write that down, that's pretty good direction. If instead the board thinks that, okay, we've done this, we have a numerous ideas, so the towns then are going to hire, because we'll have to go out for an RFP collectively to hire, you know, XYZ marketing firm or land use planner, whatever it is we're gonna hire, then we'll write that down, that that's what we're going to do.
Excellent, that's.
Going to be like, I don't know, a solar field or a community center. So, as long as we've got a plan and a process that we're able to, you know, pull the trigger on.
Right.
We've got something good to write down.
Thank you, that's exactly the information I was looking for.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the side? Hearing none, I'll call for vote, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signified by saying aye.
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 Let the record show it's unanimous. And I guess we're ready to adjourn this meeting and I thank you folks from Wellington. It's nice joining in with our neighbors once in a while. Anne, thank you for joining us and we'll be talking.
We're, I have a question for you, is it gonna be on Zoom or is it, you were talking about a place, so I'm assuming the meeting on the 8th is going to be an in-person public hearing?
Well. Originally, we discussed that it would be a hybrid meeting.
A hybrid, okay.
I was thinking a hybrid, there'll be no votes there from the public, but people will be able to come in through Zoom and be physically there if they so choose.
Gotcha, thank you, okay.
Thank you, Anne, for everything you've been doing for us.
Sounds good.
I make a motion for the Ashford Board of Selectmen to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, all in favor, signified by saying aye, aye.
Aye, thank you.
Good night, Wellington, thank you.
Aye.
Aye, everyone.
Go through the arrows and see if we got anybody from Ashford up there.
Okay, now we're moving back to what would have been the next agenda item for us is the approval of minutes. And I believe we have two minutes for approval, so there's August 1st regular meeting and then a special meeting on August 3rd.
I'll move to approve the August 1st minutes.
Second. Any discussion? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, thank you. All right, so I'll move to approve the special leading minutes from August 3rd, 2022.
Second for purposes of the special, there, so.
You may just wanna talk a little bit further.
I wasn't there, so I wasn't able to, I'm not able to approve that.
Okay, so why don't we table these? Yep, okay, so we'll table, do we have to vote on tabling? Yes, okay, so did you just make a motion to table, Jim?
I just made a motion to table the minutes of August 3rd, so we have a full attendance by all selectmen. Do I have your second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, now, present to speak finally, we'll start off with those in the room. If you have anything like to say, as always, ask that you share your name and address for the record and keep yourself to two minutes.
Michael Lusso, 49 Merle, just wanna start off saying sorry about the loss in Erica's family. Getting into tax abatements for, I was curious, I understand right now, not back and forth, but maybe tonight, at some point, saying your opinions on tax abatements, how you guys feel if that somehow came across your table with this, if this warehouse was to go through, would you guys support tax abatements from your positions or board? Say, did anyone look into license or insurance on the contracted pre-work, just to verify? Though on July 20th, they submitted a FOIA. It was worried that, there was not much known about this project, but yet I can't get this FOIA request fulfilled. And now, 20th, so we're 26, 27 days in, my FOIA request, that really probably doesn't have much information if there was no knowledge going on between town hall and that, so kind of suspicious. Recession last time, September 2007 or 2009, right out of the gate, we're spending like crazy. You know, $75,000 on this toy, $250,000 truck down the road. What is, what are we doing to be prepared if this recession does go long-term from Board of Selectmen's point of view, you know, from your plans to implement and protect, whatever it may be? Any update on ARPO with the bonus situation, I know there's central investigation, talk this, that. So, stuff that came up just now, would we be paying some EPA or some three-letter agency fees that hang over this property? Or expenses already has Wellington done on this property already, with people having to go out there, walk it. And just kind of worried me hearing about mentioning a solar field, because for all solar panel. That's it.
And just, that was, that was just like shooting stuff off the top of their head, yeah, so there is not any discussion currently about anything specific. Were you, okay, go ahead.
David Grant, 22 Wellington Road. I'm not familiar with that piece of property I've been in town all my life, can you give me an idea of where it is?
I don't remember the name of the road that it's on, but it's a pretty substantial chunk of property. I think there's a small portion of it that's in Wellington. We used to have a nice big old map of it, but it's like, do you remember, it's like 30 acres in Ashford and like. Okay, it's like 10 acres in Wellington. It's like, there's a huge portion, there's just a small piece of this property and it was used as a, I think it was like an auto repair shop for a very long time, a long time ago. And there were barrels of like oil that were buried and stuff on the property.
You're talking about Nigel's old property, 74.
It's known, okay, so it's known as the Cattle Rock property, that's what we've all been referring to it as, I don't know anything else. Yeah, so the EPA, both Ashford and Wellington have received grant funding to clean up the property.
That was a super fun scene.
Yes, so it is cleaned up.
Mostly cleaned up, it's mostly cleaned up, they look up at that last grant. Most, so in order to get that last grant, they want, the government wants, so what potentially could you use it for? There was a restaurant there called Widenship.
Anyway, I'm sorry, we are getting into, we're not supposed to, I just did wanna clarify with where that land was.
Runs Long March Road.
Yes.
I just didn't recognize the name.
Yep, all right, going on Zoom, anybody on Zoom, if you would like to speak, either put on your camera and wave at us or raise your hand. With Peter, is that, I think that's Peter.
It's Peter.
Yeah, okay. I said.
Hi. Peter Litinrich, ninety seven Trask Road. My condolences to Erica and her family, from myself and Donna. I want to comment tonight on the the topic that Board of Selectmen has taken up with expanding accessibility to town meetings. I think this is an outstanding initiative and I want to applaud your effort. The more accessible our town meetings, the more inclusive they are. The more access the townspeople have to them, the better our town will be, thank you and I I look forward to your progress on this important topic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the rest of the people here in attendance, giving my condolences to Erica.
You identify yourself, but also it's very hard to hear you.
This is Matthew Clark, forty two Burt Latham Road, Wellington, Connecticut. I'd like to echo everyone else's comments about Erica and her family, condolences to them. I also would like to support the table motion to have all public meetings in Wellington after five thirty PM. I looked it up, more than seventy five percent of American workers work during the day. So they can't attend meetings of boards and commissions in Wellington that are held during the day. To me, this is just good government, it's simple, no problem, not complex. You can have an emergency meeting anytime and you can, you can meet during the day for any kind of emergencies or special contingencies or anything like that. Another benefit of having these transparent government ordinances like this one is that people are more likely to volunteer their time and volunteer for boards and commissions if they know that those things are happening in the evening when they're not at work. So separately, I'd like to communicate or ask that the Board of Selectmen communicate the subjects on its agenda with more specificity. Tonight's agenda includes something called social media concerns. I I have no idea what that means, so. You you need to be more specific and tell us so we, so that we know what's coming up. I I attended this meeting partially because of that, I'm like, what does that mean? So if we can be more specific, like concerns about something. Threats, I I don't know, I don't know what it is, so. That's my comments, thank you very much.
Anybody else for present to speak? Seeing none, move on. Okay, so correspondence, there's a list of correspondence in your packet. So included in this, so I'm reading some of Erica's notes here and Kelsey, they helped to prepare me since this is not my full time job. So there are, there were several emails received from residents regarding that social media concerns topic and we are going to address that, that is an agenda item, so we're going to be talking about that in a couple of minutes. Okay, so any questions on correspondence?
No, I'm disappointed to see our animal control officers.
Yes. Yes, as am I, and and that's on, I think, the agenda later too, like noted. Okay, so first selectmen status update. The school building committee met on August first at six thirty PM. Chris Talona, the staff member from the Wellington Board of Ed, has filed, has filled the open spot on the committee. The committee is going to proceed with a legal opinion to review and interpret the existing Hall School, Hall Memorial School deed to determine a legal option for or a legal opinion of the deed as suggested by the state. At last week's town meeting, the vote to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the reserve fund for the school building committee was consultant, was voted down. So the next meeting of the school building committee is August seventeenth at six thirty PM. This meeting is going to be remote on Zoom. Lots of, the town is now under contract and moving forward with the survey and design work, which will be completed by the end of October. Once the final plans have been prepared, they will be submitted to Prague and the Department of Transportation for final review. Excuse me, following that process, once the plans are approved by the DOT, the town will receive final, a final award letter with access to the grant funds and the hope is that we will be able to go out to bid for construction, hopefully this winter. Going to bid for the, going to bid this winter for the construction this spring. The total grant award is one point one million dollars and the town has previously allocated twenty seven thousand dollars for the survey design work. There is no requirement for the town match for the one point one million dollar grant award. Um, update on the truck lease, still expecting the truck, December twenty two, or twenty three. So there's no update on timing or movement on that yet. So ARPA, the next ARPA meeting will be Monday, August twenty ninth at one thirty PM. The town has not yet received the second tranche of funding from the state, but this is anticipated sometime this month. The, as a result, the funding application process is currently paused until further notice. Current approved projects can be found in the ARPA, under the ARPA commissions tab on our town website. We talked last meeting about the flooring in issue with the land use office. And it has been completed and the offices have moved back into their space. COVID, COVID nineteen updates, there's been no change in the number of, or the percent of fully vaccinated in Wellington. COVID cases are eight hundred and fifty eight, which is an increase of twelve cases since our last meeting. And town staffing update, we did receive the resignation of Tina Benheimer, the animal control officer. She has been with the town for ten years and we thank her very much for her work and will miss her greatly and wish her the best of luck in her new position. The Assistant Animal Control Officer Samantha Ferguson is currently filling in on her, on Tina's work. But her last day will be August twenty sixth. So we also thank Samantha for her work. And we are going to begin the process of the search process, I think, imminent, right, Kelsey? Okay. Interviews have been conducted for the assessor position with Bolton and the expectation is that that position will be filled by the end of this month. Those are the updates that I received from Erica. Any questions? I probably can't answer them, but Kelsey might be able to.
Yes, we share the animal control officer, I believe, with Tolan.
With Tolan and just Tolan, okay.
Did she resign from Wellington alone or?
I think she resigned from both, yeah.
For both, so I would then assume that we'll probably be looking. Since we haven't worked any.
Yep. That's what. We would move forward with to fill the position as is. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, Troy, you, you're up, man.
Okay, can you hear me okay? All right, so roadside mowing is still going on, we've moved desks back into the land use office last week. Um, we've chipped a brush that we had a couple of trees come down the last time it rained for like two minutes, we had a little couple of areas in town. Chip sealing is all done in town, we'll be sweeping those in the next couple of weeks. We fixed a couple of washouts along the edges of the road that we kind of didn't get to last year, so we've been doing that. Um, the pipe finally came in for Moose Meadow, so that we finished that up today, we were waiting for some eight inch underdrain, so we finished that all up, so Moose Meadow is done with the drainage and now we're just waiting for the paving contractor to come pave the road. We put out the vote signs the other day, and tree removal is still going on around town, so. That's all I got for you.
And Erica has popped in virtually, Erica, was there anything that I missed in the first selectmen's report, anything that you wanted to add?
Liza, I think you're doing a good job, I I will defer chair duties to you for the rest of the meeting as I'm going to stay on as as long as I can and and I thank you all for your kind words. But you're doing a great job, I I'd love to say that I had more, but the end of the week took me out of the office a little bit more than I had anticipated. Thank you.
Understood, thank you. Okay, any questions for Troy?
Not on this report, no.
Okay. Okay, new business, tax refunds, so a move to refund Yetzveli Cervantes Almonte a certificate of correction in the amount of a hundred and fifty five dollars and ninety one cents.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Need to refund Sharon Proctor a certificate of correction in the amount of two hundred and fifty three dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And move to refund Jiang Hunchan a certificate of correction in the amount of a hundred and twenty dollars and forty one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next, so the social media concerns. So there are a couple of issues, one, recently there have been a few threats posted on Facebook and other social media sites. The information was received and shared, I think, I saw it on social media and I saw it shared on a couple of different pages and I know the First Selectmen's Office received several communications from concerned residents regarding potential viable threat to those who are in attendance at the, the meeting tomorrow night, planning and zoning meeting, and specifically those who were voicing opposition for the the proposed rezone. So through Erica's leadership, Troop C was contacted, the state police and other agencies have actively investigated the posts and everything that has been made, they believe there is no imminent danger, however, a trooper has been requested for tomorrow night's meeting and will be present at Hall School for the meeting. There is, so that's one issue, the other issue is a concern about some inaccurate information that has been shared online and also within this, the form of these, these meetings in public to speak regarding Mr. Demato's work with the town of Wellington, so I'm going to read some information that was shared. So CME Associates was originally contracted by the town of Wellington in November of two thousand and eighteen. The town had previously performed two separate searches in an attempt to fill the position, which were unsuccessful. The contract and the town's consideration to hire Mr. Demato was also presented to the Board of Selectmen. In January twenty twenty, CME was acquired by CHA and the contract was transferred from CME to CHA. January of two thousand and twenty two, of two thousand and twenty one, I'm sorry, Taike was formed and CHA transferred the contract to Taike with no change in rates, scope or services. The initial contract and scope signed in twenty eighteen in its entirety has remained the same, the town's contract is paid directly to the firm. So there's a lot of concern about the remarks that are being made online via Facebook regarding Mr. Demato and his potential affiliation with Taike. So, and that's been online and in public meetings and these statements are inaccurate regarding Mr. Demato. And they are currently creating a hostile and potentially dangerous situation for staff, both regular staff and contracted staff by the town of Wellington. Mr. Demato is not a member of any board or commission in the town of Wellington, he is a staff member that consults with our boards and commission. It is important for our residents to know that this accurate information, while we may disagree on potential projects in Wellington, we cannot stand for any threatening behavior in any manner against any resident, employee or citizen within the town of Wellington. So that is the social media concern. Any questions?
No, I I just want to make a comment, so, you know, we took the concerns that came into our office, we do not monitor social media, but when concerns came into the Selectmen's Office, we take a look at them in their entirety and and determine whether or not this is a concern we need to move further and and my office did and we immediately began work with Troop C and as Liza read, they worked with multiple agencies to determine that at least one of those instances they did not believe was a threat, imminent danger. But I will say there still was some concern by residents and because of that, we have asked for at this particular meeting tomorrow night for there to be a trooper. So you're aware that when we request overtime staff from the troop, that does come with a cost. We've explored multiple avenues and I will ask Kelsey just to clarify where we're at, we've been back and forth with the state police. Whether or not we had someone overtime to fill or whether or not the troops duty staff was going to be able to assist, but I did think it necessary to go ahead and assume the cost of of a trooper in in any way we could for this meeting to ensure our residents feel safe in speaking out on any side of an issue, so. And then again, twofold, there were not just one incident, but other incidents and specifically regarding Mr. Demato. And so I think it's important that our residents hear from the town, that he is a duly employed contractor, we hire contracted staff in a number of areas and this is just one of them, he is not required to be a resident of Wellington nor is our building official who is also contracted staff. And any comments to the opposite really are are making things very concerning and encouraging additional residents to make pretty threatening comments and we take those just as serious. I want you to know that there has been some unrest amongst our staff and unease as they, they are aware of the the comments made by our residents online. And it's important that they feel safe when they come to work in the town office building in Wellington. It's just as important as our residents to attend a a meeting and feel that their safety has been compromised. And so I think it's important that just because a resident makes some comments does not make them accurate and that we correct them for the record and Mr. Demato's work with the town of Wellington is that of a contracted entity and does not make him a member of any board or commission, he has never acted as a member, he does not vote and he holds no, I apologize, and holds no individual interest there, his only interest when he is working in the town of Wellington is on behalf of the town of Wellington. And he has in multiple areas helped us in in receiving much needed funding, specifically the lotsip grants to the tune of just over one million dollars, his his work and that was integral. So I I think it's important as selectmen that we recognize when errors have been made and we need to correct them in public meeting. And I have heard too many times over the last couple of months, these inaccurate statements and they have risen to a new level on social media and it's up to us now to ensure that that we give folks accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the social? So next agenda item, awarding the contract for stormwater management system mapping, it's a CIP project. So this is another project from this year's CIP plan, but it's being funded through. So this is another project from this year's CIP plan, but it's being funded through LoSiP funds. So I will start with the motion for conversation. Move toward the vendor and specifications for the stormwater management and system mapping to Beta Group Inc. in the amount of $45,000.
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
So this software will be to help the town with inventory and map of the stormwater infrastructure such as catch basin, catch basins, manholes, pipes, outfalls, culverts, swales, interconnects, et cetera, in a format that complies with the requirements put forth by the MSA four permits.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we had, Troy had any experience with this company? Like many times, companies bid, he goes, oh, yes, I've worked with them before.
Um, there, can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay, they're the same company that is going to be doing the road software. I have not worked with them personally before. Other towns that I've talked to have worked with them. They are on the CROG bid list with CROG, and we are a part of that. So, so far, I haven't heard any issues with their company reaching out to other towns. Other than that, it's about done.
This MS four legislation, this legislation here for MS four, that's a federal mandate, I believe.
It's a requirement, yeah.
And I think the first step to that is what, just figuring out where your pipes are and what you have.
The mapping part, yeah.
Mapping. And I know there's a lot of debate a few years back. Small slipper of Wellington fell into this. Okay, you're urban, but that was only down there by the UConn that the town.
Yes, we were designated, we were designated like a city, right, a few years back, and it is outside of our control to make any changes to that. So this is some work that we have to do because we're subject to the MS four. Erica, did you have something to add?
I did. I just wanted, all of that is correct, Liza. It's that concentrated area close to the Mansfield Town Line where the apartments are that put us into an urban area. And so past administration had attempted to argue that Wellington was not an urban community to no avail. So here we are. I just, one correction, Liza, the CIP funding is from, and I apologize, I'm trying to visualize the notes on my desk. It's from two previous CIP years, but it's LoSiP money, so it is set aside and still there. It wasn't direct budget money. It's from the local from the state LoSiP program. And so this would, we had put aside $20,000 in two fiscal years, and so we would be utilizing those dollars.
Any further discussion?
Nope, sounds good. We're using Brett.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, motion passes unanimous. Okay. So next agenda item, award the contract for ARPA 30-37, 2022 John Deere Skidsteer. ARPA approved $68,000 for the purchase of a 2022 John Deere Skidsteer for the Public Works Department at their August 1st, 2022 meeting. WI Clark is a state-approved vendor. So the motion is a move to award the vendor and specifications for the 2022 John Deere Skidsteer to the WI Clark Company in the amount of $68,000. Do I have a second?
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
Second, invite Jim Bullock. Discussion?
Troy, just, I'm curious how you plan to use the Skidsteer. I mean, it was, we had endless discussion at the town meeting about the micro excavator seemed to be a guess we ended up and said, yep, that's a, that's a good use, so that was a good fit. How about this Bobcat cooking device?
Okay, so there's multiple attachments with it. Currently, we just got it with a bucket for right now. Well, you can use it out on our road. It can actually be used in our parking lots this year instead of using a pickup to use a snowbox that we currently own already. It can be used with a mower head, a milling head, a jackhammer. There's multiple different uses, and it also doesn't mean that we have to buy these attachments. We can also rent these attachments. So if we needed a jackhammer for jackhammering some rocks out on the edges of the road, we could rent one for a week or two weeks and use it with this piece of equipment. The mower head, we can use it to mow our transfer station. On the retention ponds, this is a track machine, not a wheeled machine. So we can go on a little bit of like swampy areas and stuff like that. There's multiple, multiple things that it could be used for. I know some people in town think it's just another toy. It's actually a tool in the toolbox. We've got some pipe jobs that we're going to be doing. It's versatile in the road. We can push the material back into the road. There's all sorts of things that can be done with it.
Is this an outright purchase or a lease?
It's an outright purchase coming from the ARPA funds.
Any other questions or comments? Erica, did you have anything to add?
No, I think Troy did a good job. I shouldn't say that. I guess I will add, Troy and I have had discussions about whether or not in the future, if the lifespan of this vehicle is 15 to say 20 years, whether or not the town could support replacing it. And he's well aware that that may be difficult, although I would think 15 to 20 years in the future, we will have some data to represent its usefulness. And that, you know, with some funding within his budget, he may be able to either add some additional items to it, or as he spoke about renting. But he felt strongly that it would be an excellent tool in order to complete the work of Public Works in the state of original purchase.
And this was, as it states in the introduction, this was approved by the ARPA Commission on August 1st, correct? So that went through their process. Troy, you proposed it to ARPA. They discussed, approved it, and passed it along to us.
That is correct, yes.
Right, there's no special maintenance or anything like that we have to do on something of this size. I'm thinking a truck vehicle, I'm thinking, you know, big dozers and things like that. There's a lot of work to do on those links and stuff.
They're, they're rubber tracks, just like the little mini excavator that we got. So they're rubber. There is maintenance on them, just like every piece of equipment. It will still come with a, you know, 2,000-hour, two-year warranty on it, like the excavator did. So I mean, as long as it's maintained, and as long as I'm there, it will be maintained. There, you know, things do break, but there shouldn't be an issue.
Have any special maintenance or anything like that? It's just, it's rather routine.
Yep, it's routine maintenance.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I'm set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous?
I think this is what ARPA should be used for, this capital projects, no brainer.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business. So this is, in going back to the conversation about potentially crafting language regarding limitation of public meeting or public hours for public meetings. So First Selectman Rupliewski reached out to CCM, as we talked about at the last meeting. So CCM reached out to conduct a survey of other towns to see who has done anything similar to this. So CCM's process is, and I've worked with them myself as well on some other issues or questions. We pose a question, they go out to other towns in Connecticut that are of similar scope, scale, you know, demographics to our town, and ask them what they, what they do in regards to any specific question. So with this, they contacted 15 towns in Wellington's population range. 11 responded. None of the 11 towns that responded have any such restriction on timing of meetings, as we had discussed last, in the last couple of Board of Selectmen meetings. And in addition, CCM, the Connecticut, or the Council of Connecticut Municipalities, I believe, is what CCM stands for. They are not aware of any town ordinance across the whole state that sets such meeting limitations for time, such as we were discussing. As I think Jim, as you proposed, after 5:30 all meetings.
So my proposal was that all public meetings, town boards, commissions, committees shall be conducted no earlier than 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday. And there was some discussion about, like, well, does that limit a lot of people? But I've actually looked up the Bureau, the Bureau Labor Statistics. 86% of, or should be 84% of wage earners do not do shift work. So meaning 16% of all wage earners do shift work, about 6% work in evenings, 4% work at night. It's the usual, you know, doctors, hospitals, fire departments, police departments, all that. I do not believe having meetings after 5:30 is a hindrance or encumbrance or a restriction to for meetings. If anything, I think it will increase participation, and that's why I made that proposal. So welcome CCM's input of what other towns are doing, but I think this is important for our town, for Wellington. I do concede that they have an emergency meeting or something like that, and people felt better excluding emergency meetings. I'm happy to do that. It was mainly for regular meetings, special meetings. Those are the three classes of meetings, as you know, that talks about regular, special, and emergency. And I would concede that emergencies are emergencies. I haven't seen too many emergency meetings in a dozen or so years. Have to exercise that option, but I'm willing to take that off the table. Or this is emergency, you don't know what you don't know. That's my thoughts on that matter.
I mean, I think my, regarding the percentages and the numbers, and you said 80, some 86%, Matt earlier said, Mr. Clark said 75%. I mean, I know that most people do work during that timeframe. But those that don't are consistently left out. So it's continuing to disadvantage those groups. And I mean, if I look at the meetings that we hold, the vast majority of our meetings take place during the, during the not typical. So I question, what is it that spurred this particular issue right now? Because this has been common practice, and so, so I'm wondering what the problem is right now. Like, why is the question coming up right now?
I've had residents say, gee, I wish I, the ARPA meetings were during times that I could listen to that.
Okay, so it's specific to the ARPA meeting?
That was a specific example. I didn't hear anybody complain about anything else, but that was, that was a specific example.
So can I make a comment, Liza? So I listened to the statistics. I'm going to reiterate some of the comments I made before. I'm not at all in favor of making an ordinance that makes it potentially impossible, impossible for even 16% of the workers in our community. You actually single them out. Yes, clearly, there's an issue with, and I believe this is a completely political issue. I've been open about that, with the ARPA Commission meetings. This does not, using the word "shall," makes it very strict and does not allow for any special meeting that would need to be held in any capacity based on the availability of the border commission that needs to do the work. Our meetings are always open to the public. That is what our public meeting charge is. And no member of the public has been denied access. We are more open to our meetings with the recordings that we have now, and I, I think it's important that we continue that. But I am not, I would, I will never vote for an ordinance that excludes a certain faction of the population. I understand that you clearly feel, Selectman Bullock, that the ARPA Commission meetings and the timing of those is the issue, and I think that could be discussed with the ARPA Commission, and the ARPA Commission actually did take up that discussion. But you're talking about creating an ordinance that we cannot find any record of in the state of Connecticut to actually limit public meetings. You are limiting the access to public meetings. There is no way around that. I can see members of the public here shaking their head. You can disagree with me, but that exactly is what this is. We heard a member of our town speak at public to speak at our last meeting and say that he would be excluded from attending meetings if that were the case. And I think we need to recognize that. I think you take your concerns to ARPA and let the ARPA Commission hear you and deal with it in that manner, but I personally, I would be uncomfortable voting for such an ordinance that excludes any member of our, of our town.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with you, Erica, and I also think that I, I think that we would be causing ourselves more problem down the road. It does sound like it's a one, it's one meeting specifically. There are ample times that we do have to have special meetings in order to move town process and town projects forward, that if we weren't able to hold special meeting, like, a call to meeting, for example. There are requirements on when we are, like, the notification we have to give the town in order to call a town, a town meeting or a public hearing or, you know, any special meeting. And if we are making it so that we're not able to do so with flexibility, then it's impossible to officially conduct business. So I agree with Erica on that point. So that handicaps us further.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We had it discussed.
Yeah. Sure, we can, we can do a vote if there are no other comments. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion does not pass. Okay. That brings us to Present to Speak. So we'll start on Zoom this time and then go to the, into the room if there's anybody in the room. So if you are on Zoom, reminder to state your name for the record and keep yourself to two minutes. Mr. Tullis?
Oh, good evening, everyone. Ralph Tullis, 47 Village Hill Road. With respect.
Ralph, you muted yourself?
I'm sorry, I accidentally muted myself. We, a classic example would be last Monday. There were three meetings scheduled for 7:00 PM. The typical town meeting night seems to be Tuesday. And more often than not, it always coincides with the planning and zoning meeting, which created a problem for the members of that commission being able to attend both. So as far as the time of day, I'm not going to touch on that issue. You've already decided that. But as far as the day of the week that meetings are scheduled, all boards and commissions are supposed to establish their meeting schedule at the beginning of the year. And I can't understand why, when the Board of Selectmen calls a town meeting, they can't be aware of the meeting schedules and avoid conflicts with other meetings. I just think it benefits the townspeople to be able to attend a town meeting without having to decide which meeting they go to. And I would hope in the future that you would be more cognizant of of other meetings that are scheduled when a town meeting call comes about. That's it. Thanks.
That's a fair comment. Thank you.
Anyone else online on Zoom? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, first of all, I'd like to come.
Identify yourself, please. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is the second time I'm done on myself. I did it also at the beginning. This is Matthew Clark, forty-two, Burt Lathan Road, Wellington, Connecticut. So I, I was not familiar with any of the threatening comments that were made on social media. So primarily because I don't subscribe to social media. So I'm sad that this behavior has made its way to our small town. Very unfortunate. So as Republican candidate for first selectman in the last election, I'd like to last ask all town residents, Republicans, Democrats, unaffiliated, whatever you are, it really doesn't matter. There's others too, Green Party and stuff. We should all respect the opinions of others and we should respect the hard work of our town employees and the volunteers on our boards and commissions. So let's not let this kind of behavior come to our town. Stop that. I'm disappointed the Board of Selectmen wants to restrict important decisions about our town for when, by having decisions about important issues being made when town, when the vast majority of townspeople can't attend because they're working. What other towns do when regarding when they hold their meetings is not germane or, or it doesn't have nothing to do with, to do with the citizens of Wellington. Do the other towns that were contacted have meetings scheduled for one thirty in the afternoon? We don't know. I, I would say probably not. And we're making the decisions about millions of dollars of funding and we're holding votes when townspeople are not, they can't participate. So, yeah, I'm disappointed. That's too bad. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? Identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Latencich, you're, you're off. Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. I apologize. Peter Latencich, ninety-seven Trast Road. I, I'm obviously disappointed by the majority of the board deciding tonight not to increase access to our public meetings. I think this goes far beyond just the ARPA meetings, which have been a source of frustration to the community. We, we have in recent years have had a high preponderance of special meetings by the Board of Selectmen. That is not characteristic of our town history. And in these special meetings that are frequently nine o'clock in the morning, the call to the meeting or a town meeting is set. Often even our, our selectmen can't be there, let alone townspeople. I never thought we would need an ordinance like this. I'm not sure we need one now. I just don't think, I think things should be decided in the regular meeting. And with all due respect, Eliza, moving the town process forward should not be the highest priority. The highest priority should be that the townspeople be involved in that process. And you regrettably have voted otherwise tonight. And I, I think the townspeople will continue to seek ways to participate in what I think is a wonderful town meeting form of government that you apparently don't think we should have access to. Thank you very much.
Anyone else online to speak? Seeing none, going to the room?
We're still at forty-nine Merle. So I want to start off, I, I find it comical that no one's being denied access to meetings when we have multiple boards across this town that go only remote and we know that people throughout this town have bad bandwidth and stuff like that. So I find that interesting, the statement that we're closing out access and we have this passion about letting everybody come in, the minority of people. It's total, total yes, but let's see here. Also, so the other thing about including people in the town, I know you want to make everybody come, you know, thirteen, fourteen percent of the people show up or something here. Yet we're rushing votes the last meeting. Why don't we extend the voting time for the people of the town to come twenty-four hours instead of just thirty minutes to make a vote on a hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand, or whatever the, the town fee was for it dumped. If we really care about including the people of the town, actually take action to show that you care. And when it comes to voting, at least, you know, one person said that they can't make it if you made this. So there's examples across the board you could always find. I mean, today I couldn't get the housing authority because I was doing work, you know? I'm an example on the other side. Obviously, there's gonna be examples. The numbers don't lie, but we're gonna cater to the minority like our country always does. I've heard that the engine for that equipment is, or I'm not up to date on that equipment. There's something that I heard from somebody that's in that world. So in regards to I won't name the person in particular, the threat that this person that made to our community that many people can see. We, I, I'm not gonna mention other people that worked on it. I specifically did, along with many other people in a group chat. We reached out to the state police. Basically, they go interview this kid thirty minutes. Oh, he's fine. He's no threat. We find out his mom's potentially a lawyer. Who knows what the connections are to him? So I got upset. I called the FBI, the AG, Chris Murphy's office. Numerous other agents, three other agencies, because the state police coming back saying, oh, this kid's not imminent threat, whatever. If you see, I don't know if you've seen the, the memes and the screenshots of what this kid is putting out there. This kid is clearly beyond the First Amendment protected act. So I do appreciate Erica reaching out and getting the state trooper there tomorrow, or yes, tomorrow. But let me know. It was the people in this town that actually got that done. So I just wanted to point that out. My situation, clearly, I'm, I'm one that speaks out against it, very vocal. Things I put on, out on Facebook, he's a contractor. I didn't lie about that. She even said it too. He has Ty, Ty K working for this. He's grabbing tax money from this town along with six, seven other, he had a towns. He's, he's, he's just raking in money from the taxpayers. That's where he's going for his company. He's a co-founder. And you cannot deny that because it's on his, his profile, like he owns it. So say he's no part or act like he has no part of Ty K. It's completely misleading to people because he is a co-founder along with Chant, Zawski, or whatever it is. They both sit on the economic development board. And say if something comes to economic development board, granted, he can't make final decisions to something. But he's given guidance. He has information that he can mismanipulate, we'll use manipulation as a term. He can manipulate anything being displayed to the EDC, the planning zone. All of a sudden, he had STZ come in under his watch. And now we got one point five million. So then I've said about him. I will, anybody who wants to sit down, I will show you the proof that this guy, in my opinion, doesn't, based on things that we have seen out there. So. Oh, and then I'm coming after you. It was not said by me. It was said somebody, if anybody would come in and sense would have seen that that statement was not him, that person that made that comment, not physically coming after me. Made that as like, I'm going to expulsion. People wanna blow up things and, you know, it is what it is. But that's all I have. Yes, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
James, plus, I would like to collect some account related. I do wanna come to this by saying I'm speaking only for myself and not any other in this way here. Regarding the threat that was made, you may not think of the threat. However, I have to go towards this building. I'm coming out the back of you, we, we mentioned the fix. Again, we can agree to disagree. This is my field, not yours. Also, a comment was made by the same person that the town of Wellington, the Wellington Town Office is full of corruption. Offensive? Yes. I am not corrupt. Insulting? Yes. There's no reason people have to cram everybody in under one umbrella when you have a beef with one person. I'm not trying to silence anyone. I'm not trying to get anyone's freedom of speech, take that away from them. I understand you're shaking your head like you think I want to. I want, going forward, I respectfully ask that people are gonna say these comments involving me. Come to me first, and if you can't get to the right person you want, use their words carefully because they can be very destructive to other people.
Thank you, James. Yes, sir.
David Corrigan, twenty-two, Wellington, Hillary. I have noticed since we got this zone change coming in, people already connected for the zoning board even had a chance to look at it. Mike had, Mike is being the zoning agent. Has no vote on it for it. Doesn't. I used to sit on planning and zoning in this town years ago. Where you were in this town. I was the assistant chief in this town. All right. People have gotta calm down. Just because it's proposed, you gotta open up the meeting for these people, otherwise you open up the town to a lawsuit. Period. The other thing is you've got nine hundred people signing petition. How many of them are actually Wellington residents? I see people on, on the Facebook page from Ashford wanting to know what's going on. It's not an Ashford problem because it does not, of what their property in Ashford, we don't have to notify them. That's the way planning and zoning works. You have a commissioner, we need to have people on here that have to say so over this project. People on Facebook, get all these big signs up around town. They don't know what they're talking about because, wait a minute, look at me like that.
Please direct your comments to the board. We're not doing conversations between.
They've overstated the amount of traffic that's gonna be going in and out of. So, I mean, the people gotta take, calm down. Period. I mean, I sit there at home, I'm retired. It, I laugh at. They're showing pictures that don't even have anything to do with that building. It's eighty feet above the tree line. Trees are eighty feet. The building's already eighty feet above. Most of your commercial building between fifty and sixty feet tall for a warehouse. They're not eighty feet or better. People just gotta calm down. I've been in town all my life and I've never seen this town act like this for a zone change. That's all I can say.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to reiterate a couple of things as we talked about in the agenda item regarding social media. It does extend beyond social media. It does extend to in-person communications and conversations. And I, I do think everybody on every side, because there's more than two sides to every question or issue. Everyone on every side needs to remember that they're representing an opinion of theirs. And one person's opinion does not supersede another person's opinion. There are a few things that we can agree upon as fact. And those things, I believe, will be, that intent will, will come to light. But I agree, the, the need for stability between our community members. There's a significant amount of attention that everyone needs to pay to be more civil and understanding that the vast majority of people in town hall, like, we're volunteering our time. I'm not getting anybody kickbacks. Anybody. And we're a little town. Anyway. Good and well. So the Mobile Food Share will be here at the town of, the town office building Wednesday, August seventeenth, from eleven to eleven thirty AM. As we have been reminding you every meeting, please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants if you can. The last Wednesday for some, for the summer concert series at River Road Complex is this Wednesday from six thirty to eight thirty. Thank you again to all our sponsors who have helped us out this summer. Congressman Joe Courtney visited the town of Wellington on Tuesday, August second, to discuss how the ARPA funding has been spent to date. He, along with some town representatives, visited the town office building and discussed the basement project as well as air purifiers, devices for town staff that have been added. Then we toured Hall Memorial School and discussed the bandroom AC project, as well as visited the summer camp staff and campers and discussed how summer camp was funded by the ARPA money. Then there was a tour of the Wellington Fire Department number one to see the ambulance, discuss the new radios that the fire, that the fire departments are in the process of receiving and discuss how unfortunately the second tranche of the funding may be utilized. And then there was a tour of the River Road athletic complex and a, and a discussion of the drainage and lighting improvements that will be conducted there and how it will help them produce the park. Finally, they visited the DPW garage and discussed the new radios for DPW, the generator that will be utilized at DPW when there are power outages and how that will fit just the DPW, but the school buses and emergency vehicles as well as, and there was also discussion of this this year. Okay, any other issues or items for good and welfare, Jim?
Yes, like everybody else, I would also like to offer my condolences to the Wyszynski family. I served with Bob on the Board of Finance during my term as chair there. He was very active there, particularly with our fire hydrant testing. Also, I also wanna echo the, please attend the last concert we have on Wednesday. There's a fantastic, three, first of all, and they're fantastic bands out there. And I know our Jen and our social services group there's trying to raise money for, for, for good causes and all that. She's, she's doing a pretty up there. So anybody that can come down and support that, I think that's, it's a, it's a great deal. Here, the weather's supposed to not rain, so it's, you can't, what more could you ask for?
We do need a little bit of rain at some point, so.
Wednesday, late Wednesday night, after the. But if they could, if people could show up to that, it's, it's really a great deal. And again, I, I also, I, you know, the social media, I'm sorry, it's like you have to put on your boots to go look at that stuff there. There's, there's a lot of stuff. I, I remember at least people being polite. Of course, pre-social media, people were polite to each other. There's, there's no reason why we still can't be that way. And yes, everybody has an opinion. Everybody should be entitled to their opinions and all that. That doesn't mean you have, you have the right to go off the deep end. So it's listen sometimes and hear what people have to say and then formulate your own thoughts. Let's speak afterwards. All the stuff we learned in kindergarten, actually.
That's right. Yeah. And also there, like I did, I did notice, I think this person was removed, but there was one of, there's so many different Wellington Facebook groups. But there was one of the groups, there was somebody like living in Colorado or something that was coming in and started to like cause trouble and gotta be careful. Not, don't take anything too seriously that you stand. All right. And nothing else on the agenda, no other points for good and welfare. So.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, eight oh one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adjourned at eight oh one PM.